This is Wednesday, May 3rd. We are moving into the council time agenda at Clark County Council, following a work session on the restricted spring supplements. So, we begin with public comment. This would be on agenda items only. And by that, I'm referring to agenda items that are on today's, today's council time agenda. Staff, do you see anyone from the public who wishes to comment?
None. Chair, we have no individuals. We have one online.
Okay, go ahead, please.
All right. Please press star six and go ahead with your comments.
Good morning. This is Kimberly Goheen Albin, wife citizen of Clark County. It seems like to me, unless I missed something, that you missed, skipped the agenda. I did not see, or nor did I copy, that there was a work session. I might have missed that. Forgive me if that's the case. With all due respect to what we, the people, believe is a constitutional local county council here, you won't like hearing anything we, the people, have to say, and will try to shut us down, the people's ability to be absolute in our First Amendment rights, such as Vancouver City Council has done by taking our First Amendment.
Madam Chair, this doesn't seem to be on any agenda item. This is not a public log, ma'am.
This is on your rules of procedure. And stop interrupting me. This is on your rules of procedure. So, with everything unelected Clark County manager Kathleen Otto does, is following the United Nations with no regard to the people. Your general provisions, one of them is the county council, says that Clark County will be governed by the Clark County Council. Well, the council is ran by unelected people, an employee called Kathleen Otto. She's the county manager. And just like the tyrannical Vancouver City Council, who are 15-year members of the United Nations entity, called the ICLEI, and this United Nations entity has two agendas that are being carried out now through our local cities and through our counties. So, this is to weaken America, as the ICLEI is out to weaken America. So, we are all forced to comply to a One World Order, which citizens must read about at jbs.org, and look up Agenda 2021-2030. So, I'm going to go down this list here. The Clark County manager, so it says the Clark County will be governed by the Clark County Council. That is really not so because of this local government. The manager actually runs the city, or the county, I mean. She's mentioned many times here in your paperwork here. Also, the county manager has authority to place ordinances, resolutions, and/or staff reports. So, she's got a lot of authority that people need to know. So, on your letter K, this county-appointed officials, does this mean that the Clark County manager, unelected Kathleen Otto, won't be able to interject at any time until a request by a council member, or is she recognized? That means Kathleen Otto won't be able to interject anymore if you pass that one. Also, on the little II, I notice unelected Kathleen Otto took out any chance the chair could give any citizen extra time. Sounds like a communist local government, just like Agenda 21-2030 says. You will do, what you'll do is keep the people compliant, and do it by United Nations policies, and take.
Your time has expired. Is there anyone else, staff, that wishes to testify?
No, Chair, I don't see any others.
Thank you so much. We're moving to old business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of April 26?
Motion to approve the minutes, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion, changes, edits, anything? Hearing none. The minutes stand approved as drafted. Jail update. Amber.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you. I'm going to invite the team up to the counter here to speak. Thank you for having us this morning. I'm going to hand this over to Director Shook and team.
Good morning. Good morning, councilors.
Good morning.
Chair. Thank you for having us here. To provide a little update, we'll actually introduce our program manager, or jail new hire, that Counselor Medviji's been talking about. And we'll introduce her to everybody. But I wanted to provide a little bit of update on the staffing. As Counselor Marshall was asking a little bit ago about overall county staffing. So, you might have heard, we had a open house here a couple of weeks ago. And we had about 112 people that signed up for that. Seventy-five actually showed up. And from there, we have 53 people testing this Saturday for 29 open positions. We also have an additional seven that are already in the background process. So, so far, we've been pretty successful in at least getting the names and people showing up to want to participate in this new career opportunity.
Can I ask you a question on that? So, do you do your own background, or do you rely on the SO to do that? Is that a choke point, or is it going somewhere?
Historically, they've worked together. We have two background investigators that are corrections officers that do our specific backgrounds, and then all the civilian staff that we also have in jail services. So, since the transition, we've separated and we're independent in those backgrounds. So, depending on the successful applicants and how many actually pass the testing process, and to expedite some, we're hoping our two investigators will be enough. But if we need to find more and additional resources, we'll be seeking some. So, that will be coming up. Anyways, we have been pretty successful in our hiring process. Our HR rep, Keely Warren, is pushing us directly through. And we have hiring boards set up for the next several weeks in getting our last few civilian positions filled. So, that's very exciting for us. Just some general numbers. We generally have 147 officers, which include corrections officers and sergeants. And we're currently down to 89. So, we have 89 officers fulfilling those functions that we are required every day at the jail to do. They are working extremely hard. They're exhausted and tired, but hopefully, they see some light coming over the sunset here. And hopefully, we'll get some folks to help them. Currently, six officers are in training. So, hopefully, they'll be online as soon as we can get them there. So, that will be very exciting. Just some of the outreach things that we're currently doing. We have some online social media efforts being developed as we're speaking. A new recruitment outline. We have a new online Interview Now process for instant connection with applicants. Keely has reached out to the farmer's market, and the Ridge Field Raptors, and other community events to try to find local booths and opportunities to speak to the public. Not just in recruiting, but in jail, and the jail services, and what's happening with that part of the law and justice system here in Clark County, and that educational piece, which is going to be critical as we continue to move forward with whatever remodeling and/or building efforts that Clark County does. And in that aspect, I believe that RFP process closed just a couple of days ago. And we're expecting whatever responses as soon as that happens. So, one of the hires that we've been talking about for the last few months is this young lady right next to me. Her name is Anna Lookingbill. And she is our new transition, jail transition manager. And just a little bit about her, and I want her to introduce herself. But she's a local lifelong county, Clark County resident. She has a master's in the social work from Portland State. She's licensed in independent clinical social work here in Washington. Twenty years in the social services in this community. Her career focused on high acuity populations, adults and juveniles with legal system involvement. So, very applicable to the role that she's going to be filling. She's worked in the courts and multiple correctional facilities. Expertise in substance use, mental health, and trauma. Additional skills in program development, writing, and management. She was one of the first civilian hires by the Corrections Branch in 2015 to help build the reentry program. And she's very excited to return and support this continued effort. So, I wanted to introduce you and our community to Anna Lookingbill. Many folks know her, but give her that opportunity to chat with you.
Okay. Madam Chair, if I could just say this.
May we hear from Ann, please? Counselor Medviji, may we hear from Ann, please?
I didn't hear what the Chair said.
She wanted to hear from Anna first, and then.
So, I see a real opportunity as we mature our jail services.
Counselor Medviji, if we could hold off on your additional comments, we'd like to hear from Anna at this time, since she's been introduced. And then we'll certainly come back to you.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Anna Lookingbill. I am happy to be here. I was privileged, as Director Shook shared, to be one of the original civilian hires that helped build the reentry program. I chose to take that position because I believe that Clark County is stronger when we see jail as a hub for services and connection. There's a really unique thing that happens during incarceration. You're able to engage with people in a different way than perhaps you are when they're out in the community. We get folks that have tried to connect with services, or maybe services have never been an option for them. And reentry really attempt to capitalize on that opportunity. I think, at least way back when I was hired originally, there was some question, would people want services? Would our officers be part of the solution? Would community partners help us if we invited them in? And unequivocally, the answer was yes. And it's commendable that the county has taken jail into the broader network of services. I think we'll have access to resources that we didn't previously. Please know, community partners stand behind what we're doing. And I'm really looking forward to being part of figuring out, not just what we do, but how we do it in a way that's going to have longstanding impact.
Thank you very much for being here this morning. And are there questions, Anna, about her new position of jail transition manager? And hearing none. Mr. Shook, is there anything you would like to add before we turn it back?
Madam Chair, I did want to address our.
Yes, I just asked Mr. Shook if he had any additional comments before we turn it back to the counselor comments. And let's get his answer, and then we'll do that.
So, you want me to hold off again?
Yes, please. Just one moment, while we're hearing from the people who are here to speak with us.
No, Chair, I didn't have anything else to add at this time. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, back to the councilors. Obviously, Counselor Medviji, you are eager to speak. Go ahead, please.
I am. So, welcome. And what I see and started to say is, this is a real opportunity. And it sounds like you have the credentials that are perfect. And that opportunity that I'm hoping to see, and all those, the intersection between mental health and addiction and our jails is crime. That intersection is crime. And it is an absolute opportunity for the public to intervene in a positive, productive way during that time that we have people incarcerated. It's a critical time. I think you will find the stakeholders in this community are willing and anxious to join in that effort. But the opportunity that I was hoping, as we grow our jail services and the mental health addiction program, you know, that portion can attract graduate students, you know, doctors, nurses, those in the counseling business for internships, to work in what we hope will be a continuing safe environment with a population that is very complicated and very complex. And so, we can, we have an opportunity to really develop an internship program to attract those specialties, those that are growing in the community in those areas of psychiatry, psychology, social work, you name it. I think we need to keep that vision in place to attract, hopefully, low-cost compliments to the work we expect you to be coordinating.
Thank you. And now, let's turn. Yes, and I don't recognize the voice. Who is that?
Well, I'll jump in with a couple of comments. It's just really exciting to hear the progress that's being made. And, you know, really welcome to, back to the county. And it does sound like you've got a great suite of experiences to apply here. And I would just commend you on the outreach you're doing in the community, not just for recruiting, but I think like the farmer's markets and the Raptors games, that it's good for the community to hear updates on what's going on that might not be tuning into the council time, because the decision was made so abruptly. But I think all of this really builds the community's support and understanding. So, thanks, thanks for that.
Thank you. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Young.
Just wanted to say, welcome. Glad to see you here. And I'm excited. I love these updates every month. Appreciate that you're willing to do that. And the thing I would say is, I'm excited for the future of the jail, and the new place that it's going to become. And what I would always say is, think outside of the box. If there's something that's not status quo, but it's in your gut that it's going to make a difference, then push it, you know, push it forward. And let's have a conversation about it. So, nothing's off the table for me. I just am open to any possibilities of how we can help become a better community. And part of that is by helping a large percentage of our community to heal. So, appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have now heard in the jail update about the positions, the testing, the open positions, and meeting the new jail transition manager. So, back to Mr. Shook. What else would you like to provide by way of an update on the jail?
Well, I guess one of the large things that we're dealing with right now, just like the community, is fentanyl drugs getting inside of the jail. Sometimes it's in, as officers bring arrestees to our Sallyport. We've had a few events where our staff have had to save lives, literally dead there on the ground with Narcan and other medical emergency efforts. I think there's been 12 events over the last three or four months. And so, we are working on mitigation efforts to lessen the opportunities for drugs to enter our facility with changes and potential changes in how our mail is brought in, which is sometimes a carrier of those. And then also, how inmates are actually bringing them into the facility. And you would be surprised at the lengths that they go to bring drugs in. And so, we have a lot of staff members that are currently focused on that. And again, this has been a big deal. We recently got pre-approved to continue on with that over time. And again, as our staff are spending lots of hours up at the hospital, so we require two staff members for every person that goes. And sometimes we have multiple inmates at a time up there. So, that could easily decimate our staffing. And we have folks currently coming in to do that. So, we are constantly juggling and sometimes struggling. But there are people stepping up to fill those roles. So, we actually have a new position out right now to combine recruitment and training in a sergeant. You can probably imagine, when you have anywhere up to 30 new employees at one time, we need a little bit more coordination of how that training is happening. And so, we have a very limited field training officer group. And so, we are trying to bolster that opportunity to make sure that we fully train and train appropriately those new staff members so that they can be long-time employees and not short-time employees. So, those are some of our major focuses right now, as well as communicating with the fellow law enforcement agencies out there to make sure that we're listening to some of their needs and trying to figure out how we can service them as well, so.
Is there, is there a particular use of fentanyl that you've picked up on in the jail? Is it, for example, used for suicide, or for something else?
No, I think most of it's addictions and issues that are happening in the real world or outside of the jail. It's the same as why it comes inside of the facility as well.
Thank you. I see. Other questions or comments, things you'd like to add?
Thank you very much. We're working really hard to make this facility a better-running facility, and hopefully, be a part of the public safety environment here in Clark County.
And it certainly appears that you are doing that. I receive regularly thanks from the community via various emails that you are doing that. And thank you for that, and for your outreach that makes it clear that that is happening. We appreciate that very much. If there is nothing else on the jail update, let's turn to 2.3, Rules of Procedure. And thanks to all of you for being here. Kathleen?
Sorry. I'll hand it over to Leslie. She sent out the latest draft of the rules of procedure based on the last discussion with council.
Good morning, council. Based on the previous discussion at a prior council time, the changes that were made were just a few. Specifically, if we could go to page nine. Okay, right there. If we could just go down a little bit to the red section. Yeah, if we can make it bigger. Hopefully, you can see that okay.
That is a bit difficult to read. Could it become larger?
My apologies. I was trying to make it stand out from the other changes.
It does stand out.
So, this was the section that we discussed, what would happen in the case of a two-to-two, or a two-to-one vote on any proposal. So, the current language reads, "In the case of a two-to-two tie vote, or a two-to-one vote on any proposal, the motion fails to pass. In this event, a motion to reconsider or a motion to renew may be appropriate as described in the Rules of Procedure or Robert's Rules of Order."
If you are looking for reactions, I think that's perfect.
Yes, I just wanted to see if there were any comments or questions on that.
That's my comment. I think that reflects our discussion very well.
Looks good to me.
I do have a comment on this page before we leave it. Is there any other comment on this particular section? Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Marshall?
Okay, thank you. I, since we discussed this last, under, I guess that's six, on the public comment, I think I would suggest just eliminating that example of up to 20 minutes, because I think that has confused people that they think that will be the default, that it'll be limited to a total of 20 minutes. And I think there may be times at the council's discretion, it could be 20 minutes, but it could be an hour and a half. So, I think better just to leave it out. And it will be up to the council to determine the total length, if that's required.
I had the example in there. It could just as well be two hours. It doesn't really matter. Eliminating it, I think, is just fine as well. So, eliminating the part in parentheses.
Great.
I would support removing that as well. I think that's a better path. There's been a lot of public comment coming in my email box regarding this. And, you know, a lot of consternation about reducing the public's ability to communicate with us. And.
And that's not the case.
Okay, thank you. We will make that change. The other changes are on page 17. We could go there, please? So, the paragraph that starts, "Council may compel the attendance of a counselor by notice." I, there was a scrivener's error. It said, or talks about, "Three or more consecutive unexcused absences or unexcused time for more than 30 days." In the parentheses, there was a three, so I just changed that to 30. And then, in the next paragraph, there was some discussion, and this was just a suggestion, but there was some discussion as to what types of meetings are we talking about when it comes to unexcused for three or more meetings? And the, it was my understanding that the consecutive was taken out. And then, I put in the language about counselor. If the counselor is listed as absent, unexcused for three or more council regular meetings, and those are defined in Section 4. So, if we go to Section 4, which is on page. Here at the top, it talks about regular meetings. And what is listed is, the counselor's regular meetings is the Tuesday meetings, but it also lists council time under regular meetings. So, this is just an example that it would include a regular meeting day, which is a Tuesday meeting, or the council time. Certainly, the council can discuss if they want it to only be counselor, the Tuesday meetings, or if they want to include council time. I didn't know that there was a consensus on that the last time this was discussed.
Which specific language are you focused on now?
So, this is just the, the heading says, "Regular meetings." This is only to show you what the current rules of procedure state are regular meetings, which is, A, is the Tuesday regular meetings, and then B, talks about council time.
Both paragraphs in, thank you.
Yes. So, then if we could just go back to page 17, so we can look at that language.
Chair, I have a comment. I think this would be fine with me. My main concern was that, as it was written before, there was, it would have been, could have been less than 24 hours of absence, unexcuse, that could put someone in jeopardy. And I thought that was a little too severe. This at least gives you a week.
Can I clarify real quick? So, when it says is defined in Section 4, and it mentions regular meetings, so, but then A says, "Council's regular meetings," and B talks about council time. So, by this language, is it including council time or not?
It would be only because the heading says, "Regular meetings." You can certainly clarify that to say, "Council's regular meetings are defined in Section 4 of these rules of procedure, including Tuesday regular meetings and council time," if you wanted to make that clearer.
I think that would make sense, because, I mean, council time is just as important as Tuesday meetings, in my opinion.
And it is listed in Section 4, under the heading, "Regular meetings includes both the Tuesday meeting and council time."
Okay. Yeah, got it.
But if we want to make it clear, it can certainly add the language to say, "Includes the Tuesday meetings and council time."
I think if it, if that's implied already.
Okay, I will do that. And I think that's also in alignment with the code, because there is a code 2.04010 that says, "Tuesday and Wednesday shall be the regular meeting days." So, I think that also ties into the, both the Tuesday and Wednesday. Those are the only changes that I had. Unless there are any other questions from council.
It looks good to me.
And I'll just add that, you know, next we'll be talking about the counselor vacancy policy. But both the counselor vacancy policy and the rules of procedure are set for hearing on the next Tuesday, May 16th. And the reason that is, is because we are required by the charter to adopt the counselor vacancy policy by June 6th. Did not want to wait until June 6th, so I thought we would set. 6, so I thought we would set that for the May 16 hearing, and adjust it at that time, and it made sense to just do both of them at that time.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to comment on the draft counselor vacancy policy. The...I want to be careful about what may have come under attorney-client privilege. I can't recall if the memorandum you've sent us, was that attorney-client privilege, or is that capable of discussion here today?
It was sent attorney-client privilege. However, the counsel could waive that, so we can talk about it if you prefer.
Well, I could address it from a different way, and I'll just speak generally, not about the actual communications that we may have received by email. So the importance, I think, of, and hopefully this isn't going to happen, and like all these other rules, with the currently seated counselors, I see no issue. But you never know what's going to happen. I mean, everyone seems to be really hardworking, very engaged in coming, not only to the meetings they're supposed to, but to meetings they're not necessarily expected at. So, you know, all this discussion, I think, hopefully, will have the best rules in place, but will never be needed, and likewise with the vacancy policy. But the main points on the vacancy policy are these, that are unconstrained by state law. I think the only constraint that I've seen in my own research is that the existing counsel cannot vote on a replacement until the actual vacancy has occurred, meaning there's no prohibition on setting out a timeline with the existing counsel prior to the vacancy occurring. We could take it all the way up through the nomination process, and even the counselor that's expected, and I'm assuming that there's not something that just comes that's unanticipated, but if we have a future date that there's going to be a vacancy occurring, the entirety of the counsel should be able to procedurally participate, accept the actual vote, which cannot occur until after the vacancy is in existence. So I would advocate one for a very strict timeline, and I would question why we need 21 days, calendar days. I mean, that's pretty much okay. We've wasted a month or taken a month to even get applications. I mean, the whole purpose of this process is to have the seats filled as soon as possible, and minimize the chance that it would be out of our hands, meaning, okay, well, now we have a two-to-two vote, we have to send it off to the governor, and depending on whether they proceed with alacrity or not, and the last vacancy, the governor did surprisingly move very quickly. But I think we want to have a very tight timeline and do as much as we can procedurally prior to the vacancy actually occurring. So I would question the 21 days, and also put a timeline on the actual nomination process with the existing counselor that are in and seated, because, quite frankly, as soon as you get to a two-to-two vote, you're going to have problems. So you want to accomplish in a timely way as much as you can prior to the vacancy occurring. Those are my comments on the...So I would like to see some tightening of this vacancy policy.
Counselor, if not 21 days, how many days are you suggesting would be best?
So I would like to put, number one, why do we need 21 calendar days?
How many do you think would be more ideal?
14 calendar days. I mean, this is, we want to keep...14.
One-four. I have no objection to that. I will say that, having been through the recruitment process to fill a vacant spot, there is quite a bit of time that goes by in simply getting out communications and clarifying for possible applicants, what is the job? And it is not speedy. So maybe it could be done in 14 days. I know, no fewer days than that.
Legal notification requirements, and they're in here. This is a nonpartisan position now, so nevertheless, the direct invitation should go to the known parties, as well as the legal notification. I think it all can be done sooner than a month period.
Yes, go ahead.
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I think this discussion does merit, I think it does have merit to it. So a couple of things that came to me that, you know, at this point in time is, question first of all, if a counselor submits a resignation, is that binding at all? Can they pull it back and say, "Never mind"? Can that happen?
Yes, they can.
Okay, so that's something to consider, for sure. But in terms of merit, one of the things that came to me is that we're elected by district, and so the people specifically in our district are the ones that have elected us. And it is, to me, problematic that the only person, you know, the only counselor that can't provide input on who comes in to replace is that person. Does that make sense? So it's like, if we're looking to fill that vacancy, it makes sense that the counselor that will be vacating the seat would have a voice, to be able to represent the constituents of that district. But I don't know, I mean, we run the risk of going all the way through a process, and maybe a counselor doesn't like who, you know, is selected as, not the person, but, you know, who's on the list or whatever, and they pull their resignation. I don't know if that's an issue or not.
So, if I may, the prohibition is that the outgoing counselor cannot vote for the replacement. There is no law that says they can't participate in, you know, selection of people to interview the interviews, but I will note, if the council decides to do that, there is certainly the risk that someone could pull their resignation, and then you've gone through this process. The other issue is that we may need to make it clear in the vacancy policy as to when the vote occurs, because generally, my understanding is that once the interviews are done, completed, the council goes immediately into executive session, discusses, and perhaps talks about, you know, going back into the regular meeting to then appoint and take a vote at that time. So you may have to, you know, go through the process of the interviews, but then wait until after that counselor has actually left before that process takes place.
So the only thing you lose if someone suddenly withdraws their resignation is the effort, you know, the notification. And what, so as to Madam Chair's question originally, besides reducing the 21 days to 14-day calendar days, which would give us plenty of time for the legal notification as well, which, with Columbia, I think it's 10 court, or 10, I almost said court days, calendar days. What I'd like to also put in place here is that, basically, the process for going through the nominations is essentially what we do with every other vacancy. We get resumes, letters. What I'm proposing is, basically, what I consider a paper selection of all those that apply, to narrow it down to those that would then be interviewed, to basically the nominations. So the nominations, that's the process where we get into the challenge with the law, because you can't vote until you have a vacancy. I mean, I accept that, and that makes perfect sense. So what I would like in this policy is that, basically, we define that that nomination process can be had within a specified time after the legal modification with the existing counsel prior to the vacancy actually occurring. And then you have a point of demarcation, you have the actual interviews and voting, selection by only those counselors that remain once the vacancy has actually occurred.
Just a comment, having chaired the process again before. This is not as straightforward as one would imagine that it might be. For example, in going through the applicants, and in the prior process, it was the chair who did the interviewing of the applicants, and that was by the RCW. There was an applicant who went through the process, including the interview, and learned a lot about the position, and just prior to being announced, possibly even to the governor as an applicant, he or she withdrew because of finding out what the position really entailed, and saying, you know, "Maybe this isn't what I thought it was, and it's not going to be a mesh with my life." Those kinds of things are human activities that take place, and I tell you, they take time, and they have to be dealt with at the time in a good way. So we need to be sure that we build in the opportunity for counsel to deal judiciously with things like that that come up, because they do, they just come up.
Chair, I have a couple of comments.
Yes.
I would like to retain the 21 days, and I agree with you that things come up, and it takes time, and this is an important decision that we would be making, and sometimes it's better to take that time. You may end up spending more time if you try to go too fast. If we start the process, though, earlier, we could be, you know, ready to go, you know, right when the vacancy comes up. So I think, I would suggest, keep the 21 days. I'd be okay with starting the process earlier, but knowing that the risk we would take would be that the person decides they want to stay and not leave. So there'd be some risk involved, but, you know, I don't see a problem with advertising and, you know, all of those things, so that we're ready to go when the actual vacancy occurs.
I think that's a very reasonable position to have in the procedures here.
So I'm not hard and fast on moving from 21 to 14. If you think you need the additional week, that's fine. I just wanted to ensure that we, with the existing counsel, that we get as far as, you know, whittle down the field to get the three best candidates that would then be considered. I mean, nothing we do will impact the vagaries of human behavior and people changing their mind and dropping out at any point. I mean, you can get someone to drop out even before they're sworn in, after you've selected them. I mean, there's nothing we can do to actually prevent that. So anyway, those are my comments. I just wanted, with the full counsel, prior to a vacancy, I wanted to get as far down the road as we could and start as early as we could. And we experienced this with Battleground. I mean, Battleground took as long as humanly possible to not make a decision before they passed it on to us, and then we moved as quickly as we could to fulfill the voter's right to have a representative in their district. So I want to avoid that. You know, the last election process, this will be a lot different because of the charter amendment. You know, we kind of fell into a gray area, and not one of us on the council knew what was happening except for the chair, who was being solicited, interviewed, eliminated. I mean, all of a sudden, we just had nominations. You know, so that process will change by this new rule, and I think it'll be a very positive change.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
What is your expectation from today in terms of timing? Because I think this is, I think this is a great discussion, and I'm leaning one direction, but I would like a bit of time to kind of digest it. And we have several people that have been following this process very closely and providing good, solid public comment and emails to us, and I'd like to hear what they have to say. That also brings me back to, on the rules and procedures, can you forward that email to Leslie? We received comment that there may be some errors in references and stuff in the code. So if we could look at that. But yeah, I mean, if we could have some time to digest, I'd appreciate that.
So I'll just respond. I did get a copy of that email, so I'll review it and make sure that that's been addressed. And I think Councilor Marshall had something to say, so I'll let you do that before I talk about the rules.
I would just agree with that. But just to one comment, to your concern, Counselor Medvedje, that there may inevitably be a period of time where there's just four council members, even as efficient as we want, to move forward, and that I think we could take care that we're not having, you know, really important issues that come before the council that could result in a two-to-two vote. So I think scheduling could help with that particular issue, if we end up with two-two for some, hopefully, brief period of time.
So in terms of what I'm looking for today, and I understand what you're saying, Counselor Young, about needing time to digest this, I just want to be mindful. We can certainly, you know, it's already been noticed for the 16th. If, at that time, the council talked about this and decided they wanted to continue it to June 6, we could do that. But what I'm looking for today, and it sounds like there's a majority of the council that wants to look at having outgoing counselor participate in the process up to, before there's a vote. What I need to know is, looking at this vacancy policy as it is currently drafted, it talks about, you know, getting the resumes, reviewing those. Part C talks about reviewing applicant's materials and selecting no more than five applicants to interview. That includes, counsel asks for selection of candidates for interview by way of a motion. We go through that process, and it will require at least three votes. Then the council publishes the regular notice for interviews. So my question is, when we get to interviews, because as I said, typically, I feel like it, Section D, upon completion of applicant interview, the council may convene an executive session to discuss the qualifications. And then you come back into the open meeting, and that's that point that the chair asks for nominations, and that's when the vote occurs. So I'm just trying to figure out where it is that we stop the outgoing counselor, because it seems to me it would be awkward if they're involved in the interviews, and then we go to executive session and come out, and then they don't participate in the vote. But I just wanted some direction from counsel on that.
Say anything which would be awkward, that they would go through the process, and then what?
Well, so once the applicants are chosen for interview, then the next process is that council would set a public notice for the time for the actual interviews, and then once the interviews are done, going into executive session to discuss the qualifications, no vote during executive session, and then coming back into the open session. It's at that time that nominations and a vote would take place. So I was just trying to figure out what council's intention is concerning the outgoing counselor, whether they still... whether they still are involved in the interviews and the executive session but not participate in the vote or are they not involved in the interviews? So that's, I'm just trying to get that direction.
You know, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Marshall.
Yes, it is. Thank you for that because I think that's a real concern. And I would say the outgoing counselor be involved just up until the interviews and that they not participate in the interviews, the executive session and the vote. But I do believe if we've got everything lined up, we can move really quickly and I think that's where you would draw the line.
Thank you for that. And I was going to say the same thing, but for a different reason. And not having the incumbent participate throughout the process that just leads to the vote, that process is formative. And if the outgoing counselor is a part of that, perhaps their role is different than what is envisioned here and being too strong. So I would say that that would be a good time prior to that for them to have bowed out.
So that's consistent with what I was saying and I think where it belongs is under paragraph B, counselor vacancies. And then just add another sentence after the applicant shall provide a couple of resume references, you know, add to that, that the full council at that point will, just as we do with every other board vacancy, narrow down based on resumes and basically paper review, narrow down the nominees. And then the point of demarcation is paragraph C where you actually do conduct the interviews. And quite frankly, that probably should not happen until the vacancy has occurred because you're going to go into an executive session, then you're going to come out and vote on who the selectee is. So that should only occur once the vacancy. But you know, there's scant law out there, but the law that's there seems to make it clear that you can't select anybody until you have a vacancy.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, again, I'm undecided on this whole entire thing, but I'm leaning towards it, but want to find out other unintended consequences. But I do agree in terms of this, I think that's the right point in time to stop. I think that the vacating counselor can have influence on the individuals that are chosen to be interviewed and I think that's a good time to stop it.
Okay, so thank you for that, counsel. It sounds as though there is a majority who support having the outgoing counselor reviewing materials and involved in the selection of individuals to interview, but that the interviews and vote would not take place until the vacancy is effective, until the counselor is vacant from the position.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, I will go ahead and make those changes then. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, it's a small point and I don't know how specific we want to be because having been through, and I know you went through this too, you know, every selection process is different. And the point I want to make is, do we specify three nominees or five nominees or just say nominees? Because you know, sometimes you have one great nominee and all the rest aren't so great, or you have six great nominees and you'd like to interview them all. That's always been very flexible depending on what the position was and what the resumes looked like. So I just tee that up if anyone wanted to specify how many nominees we actually, or if we don't want to state it at all, just say nominees.
Well, right now, we have that the, we will have no more than five applicants to interview and that seems like a good number to me. That gives you some variety in the applications and the candidates. Sounds good. I think we would do well with that.
Just out of curiosity, how would we handle that when we're selecting? I assume we would handle it the same as we did for planning commission interviews?
No, I would say not. Because that is done by a staff person who looks for, who gets the majority votes from council. I think a separate process should be determined for this. That is more consistent with the magnitude of importance of this particular selection process, which is a difficult one.
What would that process be?
We have not specified that, but we could discuss it.
Well, and actually, and I think it, sorry, Counselor Medvedje, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, I was just going to say, first, I think the language that exists, no more than five applicants for the nominee, is a good starting point. And after Glenn's point, you know, we kind of informally do it by email with these other positions and I think this is a lot more important than that. So it would be better to solidify a process where everyone had the same letters and Michelle's been pretty good at printing that out if you want it, you know, resume letters. And then we could actually define an executive session where we have open discussion about those applications prior to then voting on who those nominees would be. Instead of doing it by email, actually have a specified executive session as part of the process.
I would support that, counselor, because I don't find that by email is an appropriate process for this. The executive session idea would be fine.
I would just like to suggest maybe in addition to the process, and that would be, just so the public has an idea of who these people are, that there be some public aspect to this. There could be a public, you know, interview process, they could present themselves, a few questions could be asked. I would like to see the public have some ability to see who's being considered before it's all just done in an executive session.
So if I may, so this draft counselor vacancy policy, I think addresses all of those particular issues. So just to kind of go through the process, what happens is, you know, we do the 21-day notice, receive the resumes, applications, and then in Section B, then the council would review the cover letter resume references. Section C talks about the interviews. So the council would review the materials and then select. So it sounds to me as if what you're saying is that it's at this time that there would be also be an executive session to talk about the qualifications or was that what the council was discussing?
So my point was to have an executive session on that nomination process. That's all based on paper.
And that does come later.
And I would just agree that, you know, we do open interviews in the public once we have the nominees. I think that's the point where we want to get involved, the public. Because I think, especially if you have 15, 20 or more applicants, some of them may not want to be in a public interview until they're farther along. They may not want to subject themselves to that. I think that's too much process for the public. I think we limit the public's participation once we actually have the nominees in place and are actually doing the open interviews.
I would agree with that and that's actually what's my intention.
I didn't know what you were going to say. I think that process is already explained in here, but I'll check it to make sure that it fits what your thoughts are. Are there any other questions or statements on this?
Just one, I mean, is that a legitimate use of executive session? Okay.
Yes, reviewing qualifications for employment is the executive session.
Great. I'd be supportive of that.
Okay, if there's nothing further, then I will work on this and bring it to, we could bring it next week, just in case there's any other questions before the May 16 hearing. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. We are ready to move to new business. I am sorry to say that your chair needs a five-minute break. So it is 10:54. I'll see you back at 10:59.
I think we need to wait till 10:59.
Yes, that was my intention. Yeah, I think we do. It is now 10:58. Thank you. It is Wednesday, May 3rd. We are back from a five-minute recess with council time for Clark County Council and we are ready to pick up new business, item 3.1. There is a proclamation request, if we may hear about that, please.
Yes, so the jail services director has requested a proclamation request to recognize National Correctional Officers Week, which is May 7th through the 13th. One thing, we did get this a little after our deadline for yesterday's meeting, but during the break, we did hear from the jail services director that they are doing some celebration, acknowledgement during the week next week. So if council one is okay with the proclamation, if you have any edits, we can certainly make that. But if council wanted to join, maybe an activity to read this proclamation in front of the correction staff, that might be really nice.
I think that would be an excellent idea. It is well-deserved and timely to do that.
I just want to verify, is it Monday and Tuesday?
Yes, Monday is the Friday for one half of our work session and then Tuesday is the other Thursday.
Okay. So if we could hit both days, maybe we can split up council or if you want to do both, but just to make sure that we're in front of as many staff as we can be.
And so I would encourage everyone to attend and we can even have full counselors there as long as, you know, you don't discuss business at all. Who wrote this and are we confident that we've caught all the typos and?
For about five years, I had many examples of this proclamation and so Director Barnett and I had gone through it and improved it, updated it and made sure that it read what we wanted to really impart to these very critical public safety officers.
I'm fully supportive as written then and hopefully we can all get invited and participate and really highlight what you're doing and the career that this provides in Clark County.
Being studied this last night and seeing this morning what you say about how it was drafted, it's great and it seems to me that it should go forward as is. I think that's at least a couple of.
Absolutely. I absolutely agree as well.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So we'll get this finalized and signatures and then we'll put it on our calendar for, it's called the weekly calendar, but the calendar, just to put it out there so that the public knows that you might, we might have a call, but again, don't have any deliberation or discussion or action and we'll forward you the invites as soon as we get them.
Thank you. Now we go to item four, counselor reports. Are there any?
Chair, I just have something quick I'd like to mention and that's just for the community, a reminder that we have ARPA small grants that are being advertised right now and the applications are due May 19th. So this would be for small business and for nonprofits. So it's on the main page of our website. I encourage folks to take a look at that and get those applications in.
Very good. Additional reports? Okay, let's turn to work session requests. Public defense for indigent defense, I presume, Amber.
Thank you, Chair. This is a request in front of council to get on the work session calendar to talk about our public defense model in the county. And I've attached the work session request here and answer any questions that you have.
I'm going to quote Nike, "Just do it." I look forward to it.
If I may, if you're looking for any direction and I've talked to some indigent defense attorneys and it's not an area of expertise for me, but I think getting a sense of what the history has been, the recent history and, you know, actually including like the resources that have been allocated over time and maybe what's envisioned. I think there are various models, maybe a little bit of pro and con on different models. My sense is that different models may work and it all depends on who you get into those positions. And then I just became aware that there's Washington State Office of Public Defense and I don't know if there's some expertise that is there, best practices, lessons learned that could be helpful in informing exactly what we want to shape in our program.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Marshall. As Counselor Medvedje said today, we've been talking about this since November. So I engaged with the Public Defense Office for the state back in November and also did outreach with all of the justice partners. So that included the courts, the PA's office, a couple of members of our local defense bar. And I will, Ms. Stone, who's our superior court administrator, is going to be joining me with the presentation. I'm also going to have a couple, ask a couple of members of the defense bar to also join so we can answer any of the questions that the council has on the history. There's a long history in our county of what this model's looked like and the pressures that it faces now with a changing scope that we're under in our county and how crime is occurring in our county as well.
Great, thanks very much for all of that background work. I appreciate it.
Amber, one more question. You mentioned that there will be funds that will be used for FTE, which is excellent, of course, because that would be much needed for the development of this program. And then you go on saying that if approved, new classifications and salary ranges will be presented to council for consideration. What is your timeline on doing that?
If I hit my button. So thank you for that, Chair. We have had some, we've worked on this the last couple of months of what those classifications would look like, looking at parity with the prosecuting attorney's office of paying public defense as we're seeing throughout the nation. Public defense offices often lag in salary behind defensive, you know, district attorney office, PA offices. So we are actively looking at that with Baker Tilly to make sure that we come in parity with the PA's office. So what I'll be asking for, because we do not have a classification or a salary range for the public defender attorneys, council will need to approve that. So I'll be putting those forth after I get direction from the council at the work session on what the policy will look like for us.
So you anticipate a draft perhaps at the work session?
I can definitely do that.
That would give us an idea of what's coming up.
Absolutely. I can add that, Chair.
Thank you. I heard another voice.
Yep, just one quick question. Did you say?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. That we're going to have somebody from the Office of Public Defense and all those other?
So I can definitely, I have engaged with the state office since November and I did that in my prior life with the courts as well. We've been engaged with those folks. So I can definitely invite a state representative down if the council would like to do that. They just offer advice. What is important to me is to have the folks that are on the ground in our community who deal with our specialized, so we mentioned that yesterday, Clark County is unique. The bar, you know, you have to pass the bar in the state of Washington, but a lot of our pool is over the, in Oregon. So. So we'll have our local bar members that are here.
Okay, I'd love to see them all, but the more the merrier. We can have a party. No, information is always good.
It is, yes. Thank you.
So just for clarification on that, so the work session, Amber and Cheryl will be presenting. We normally don't have other agencies join and present, so it's council wanting all the other outside agencies to participate in the presentation. So we'll only have, oh, sorry, Chair. My apologies.
I was just thinking that perhaps they could be available virtually and answer questions, participate in comments as they see fit. That is an approach that would be more consistent with our past practice, I think.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair.
Also, I remember the outreach that had been done with the Justice Department regarding how such an office would be set up and so on. That has been a while since that has been shared with us. Could that be shared again in some appropriate way before this work session so that that's fresh on our minds? There were, as I recall, some good suggestions there.
Yes, I can absolutely get on one-on-ones or whatever. Kathleen decides that I would be the appropriate venue. Absolutely, I'd be happy to, to share that with counsel. And we've kept the engagement up with the courts. Yes, you can imagine this is a very hot-button issue, and it's something that is very, the point. And the reason I have asked Ms. Stone with the Superior Court to attend the presentation and do that with me is this Superior Court bench, and as you saw with the new general rule and also their study that they have conducted by National Center for State Courts, is a very important subject in how that interfaces when they make policy changes. Many of you know that they just updated their calendars for their criminal side, and that is a deficit when we don't have a public defense office. It's spread out through a lot of stakeholders. So she will talk about that and the judicial perspective in the session.
Are there comments on the work session request?
Just saying, I look forward to it.
Okay, we turn to any policy issues that need to be discussed today.
Yes, I have just a couple this morning. The first one is the noise ordinance. So I did follow up with Sheriff Horch about whether or not he would cite for noncompliance if there was an update to the ordinance. If counsel remembers, we talked about this last, I believe, October, and because the sheriff would not enforce that code, the council decided not to move forward at that time because it could give a false impression to the constituents that, you know, by adding the word hooting, which was the request at the time, would be enforced. The sheriff did confirm with me that he will enforce with citations. And so my question for counsel is, do you want to move forward with a revised noise ordinance to add the word hooting? And if so, April has volunteered herself to work with the sheriff to update the code and bring that back, a draft code back to the council. The sheriff made it clear to me, he is not the one that is, while he's supportive, he's not the driver of the change, and does, but we'll remind him that this code is under his area, so the sheriff's office should be intimately involved with that drafting, and we will help him if counsel would like us to move forward.
Moving forward seems quite appropriate. However, I have a question on this hooting. If the sheriff says that he is not the driver of that addition, who is?
He had told me it was a discussion that he had with one of our counselors. And so therefore, and we had a constituent, I think, that had reached out to counsel last year, and I believe the same constituent reached out this year.
We did have someone reach out to us on noise, at least I did, but there was nothing about hooting. So I was wondering, where does that come from?
That came from their specific request last year, because that was noted in the city of Vancouver's code, and it was told to them by the sheriff's office deputies that they could not enforce because the word hooting was not included.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
The constituent that brought it forward this year gave us an email with some very specific text, and I would say as long as that term, if we feel legally hooting does, accomplishes what we need to do, then I'm good with that. I just wanted to make sure that that is the case.
I'm not sure I know what it is, but that's my own ignorance. I, I think, well, I don't know, I think if I were the sheriff, I'd have a hard time identifying hooting if I heard it or if I didn't. So if others are comfortable with that word, great.
And what I can do too, is the sheriff did mention when he talked to a counselor that he was fine with the changes, so I assume it's the changes that the constituent sent by email this year. So we can put that language in there and bring it back to counsel to look at.
Sounds good. Any other comments?
I'd just like to take, if somebody could send me the site for the ordinance to be familiar with what's in there right now.
Okay, thank you. We will, we'll work with the sheriff and draft some language and bring it back, and then once counsel's ready, we'll notice it for a hearing. Next week, we'll have the discussion at council time on the winery and rural centers. So that will be coming before you all, and then looking for direction on what you would like to be moving forward, as well as the dark skies or the light issue. The council had asked for this, go back to DEB. They are apparently writing a formal response, and hopefully we'll have that before Friday so we can post it. My understanding, not being there, and I think a couple of counselors were there, was that they weren't necessarily interested in having that in development code. So, but we'll bring, once we get that back, we're supposed to have it back this week, we'll bring that back to you guys next week as well for some suggestions moving forward.
Right. Chair, I have a question related to the wineries and rural centers.
Go ahead, Counsel Marshall.
Thank you. I had forwarded some information that I received from Justin O'Dea, so I just wondered if that got rolled into whatever's coming back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double-check with April, because she had most of the presentation already done, but we'll see what we can update in there. Yeah, not posted yet, so we have time.
Good, thank you. Okay.
Comments on the policy issues?
I have one more. I believe the fire districts met individually with counsel regarding fire impact fees, and they are ready to come and have an initial discussion with counsel, and I'm hoping that they can come next Wednesday. I don't believe we have any work sessions that week. So we'll have Representative, the fire chiefs come and discuss the fire impact fees, you know, and get counsel's feedback as they proceed in the process. Is there any concern with that?
I think it's a good idea. I look forward to the conversation.
My only concern is how the state does the funding, like with the schools, I wish it was done differently. But yeah, we need to talk about those impact fees once again.
Okay. And we'll do it as a work session so that they, we don't have one on the calendar, so we'll have them start first, and then we'll go into counseling. That's all I have. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I wanted to discuss with the council another policy issue that I kind of alluded to earlier.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Mebedji.
We've just brought this up from time to time, and it really gets to the heart of some of the friction between the executive and legislative branch on ability to do things. I'm not an engineer, and I know engineers rule. So this finance team, as I told Mark Gausway the other day. But we have issues all the time on permitting fees, the steps, the time it takes, some of the inequity between the capability of county engineers and those engineers that are out in the field submitting plans. And it boils down to, you know, I want to minimize as much regulatory excess as we can. And one of those is engineering stamps. When someone submits plans in whatever area, if they've got a licensed bonded engineer stamp on their license under the state of Washington, you know, that should be not a complete and entire process, again, for our engineer to double-check, when in fact our engineers pretty uniformly probably have less of a resume than those out in the construction industry that are actually submitting them. That's just one example. You know, I alluded to it earlier when we were talking about permitting costs for broadband, for putting cable up on poles or putting it underground. You know, I'm hearing exactly the opposite from public works on what I would like to achieve, which is minimal cost and time for those in the business. And I don't, I don't know how to address that, other than let's have a, let's have a work session on it, you know, what are we willing to subsidize? But from, but the starting point is obviously safety. We want to have good engineered projects, no matter what it is, especially along our roadways. But what is the minimum that other counties are doing to ensure? I mean, we just had an example of an underground conduit having to be dug up and redone because it wasn't properly filled and collapsed, you know? So that was with all the protections in place, stuff still happens. But, you know, I would just like to kind of get to the heart of the issue. Why do we do, why are we replicating work of good professionals? It's not just money, it's time, and time is a killer for the construction industry. So I'm trying to get to the heart of it, and broadband is one issue that's kind of brought it to the forefront. You know, the cost per foot to get cable underground, you know, what does it really need to be? What do the costs really have to be to ensure safety, that we don't have to dig things up more than once? So anyway, I don't know how to get to that, but I'd like, if there is counsel support, to kind of get to the heart of those issues, focusing on public works, focusing on the permitting process.
Chair?
Well, I certainly support focusing on the permitting process, as we've been working on that for some time. However, with this particular request, I would need a little clarification on, what is the issue again? What is it that we're going to be asking for information on and then maybe taking action on? Could we be more specific?
Broadband, cost per foot of burying cable. How about that? And that, because that'll educate us on some of the other issues, on engineer stamps, engineering plans, and what we really need to do at a minimum to ensure good engineering work is done without overburdening the private sector in their permitting process.
Well, broadband cost per foot is certainly clear. Now, is that something that we, and I'm going to direct this to staff, that from your experience that we need feedback on?
Well, the question has been raised before with regards to one of our broadband customers, and the cost is different, whether it's underground or on poles. And so if the customer wants to do it underground, that's going to increase the cost. But I'll, I'll work with Amber and Ken to see what, because I thought we had a cost estimate, and then we had them partner together so that they could understand what was being proposed versus what we're doing. But I know that they were doing analysis on this.
Yeah, and so for that one customer, that's an ongoing process. Hopefully, it's going to be worked out. What I heard was surprising to me that there are so many reviews that go, I mean, from public health on, I mean, it almost sounds like a CIPA analysis every time we bury some cable. And maybe that's all justified and necessary. I'm just trying to get to the heart of what really is justified and necessary, because from a, from a policy point of view, I want to get broadband laid out, whether it's up on the pole or down, underground. I think we should do all that we can to remove the friction in the cost.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Counsel.
So I definitely would be supportive of this, but I would like, I mean, some of your initial comments, I wouldn't, I would like a little bit more focus beyond just broadband. I'll share a quick example. Wasn't planning on saying anything about this, but it's appropriate. A constituent that I ran into just a few days ago, who is a general contractor, and he got hired on a job to replace deck boards that were no good on a deck that was existing. And so he removed those deck boards, and there's a part of a deck, it's called a ledger board, that is attached to the building, and it's a very common thing with decks if they're not flashed correctly, that they end up getting water and they rot. So he removed that ledger board, put a new one, and somebody from the county stopped by and issued a stop work order because a permit is required if any component of the deck is touching the building. So whether or not that's a good process, I don't know, but the process that unfolded after that is what I'm frustrated with, is he was given a stop work order and the job site couldn't change until he's gotten through the entire permitting process, and it's been two months. So the, you know, the, the customer has had their home and, you know, piles of materials and stuff for two months. So he submitted what he was requested of him, everything on the list, and waited a few weeks to get a response, and he got that response, and then they asked for a site plan. You know, he's not changing anything, he's not changing the location of the deck, he's not changing the structure. I don't understand why he would need a site plan, first of all. And second of all, then he got stacked on the bottom of the list, and he's been waiting now for three weeks since then. So some of this process needs to be refined, and there needs to be some common sense involved.
Wow, thank you, Counsel. That's a very good example.
If you could send me the address, that is helpful, you know, because we, we're not perfect, but we're striving to be perfect. And the way we learn is by looking at it, and unfortunately, and I'm not saying this at all about this, but sometimes, like I've gotten a call from a constituent that says that this isn't this, that when we actually look in the system, they didn't hit, submit things on time. You know, so there, sometimes there's ownership on both sides. I'm worried about our side. So if you could send me that constituent's address, please let me know.
Appreciate that. There's always two sides to every story, but the site plan, though, really just does not make logical sense, so.
I get that, but not knowing anything about it, we will look into it.
And Kathleen, would you be willing to report back to us on that when we have our next discussion on this topic? Because that is a very illustrative example.
So I'm not, do you want me to, just because I want to preserve, you know, some sort of discretion when it's coming with an external customer, in the event that maybe if they didn't do something perfect, or if there's a hiccup, I don't necessarily want to say that about them publicly. So is it acceptable for me to update counsel on one-on-ones?
That's fine with me.
Okay. If there's a process change, obviously, if there is a process change that we're going to do based on what we're learning that could be efficiency, absolutely, I will bring that back.
So, and I was going to make that point exactly. I mean, I think the executive does a good job of responding to these little anecdotal issues, and I'm not saying little, it's not little for residents that has their backyard torn up coming into the summer month. But, but it's, some of it's policy, some of it's decisions we could make, and that's what I want to get to the heart of. So I don't want to be overly narrow on this presentation, as Glenn's comment, but nor do we want to have a free-for-all on every permitting dispute that occurs in the county every month. But anyway, I think, have we outlined it enough to at least focusing on broadband and maybe some broader issues on processes?
Yes, we can certainly do that. And we'll also include the engineering stamps. I was not part of the prior discussions. I know it had been reviewed before, and so that will be one too that we need to, you know, talk to legal and our staff to see, because there is some liability, I believe, in concern with that, but maybe there's a way to still minimize the review if it was already stamped by an external company. But we'll include that in the discussion.
Very good.
Chair, if I could just?
Yes, go ahead.
Add a little, little note of caution related to that, because sometimes duplication is intended to protect the public's interest, and there's been cases throughout the state and the country where that hasn't occurred, and the results haven't been good. So just a note of caution that what we do is preserving the public's interest, and you just have to balance all of those things.
Okay, I think that is a good discussion, good, good follow-up in the future. Okay, I think that is a good discussion, good, good follow-up in the future. Thank you for, for that. Are there any other policy issues for discussion?
Yes, Chair, just, since we don't have an executive session, we can spend a lot of time on policy. I just wanted to get, or just remind folks, there was some exploration about possible formation of an agricultural commission or committee, and I had forwarded some examples from other counties throughout the state. So at some point, it'd be good to get an update on that. And I don't know what a timeline might be, but again, as we're doing the comprehensive planning, and we've got engineering and various committees informing things, that that would be a healthy part of the dialogue.
Yeah, and one of the pieces from our last discussion was looking at conservation features, the Parks Advisory Board, Heritage Farm, and seeing where there's overlap or where there's gaps in how the new ag commission could add value. So Ken and Amber are going to be, are coordinating with, because most of that is under Public Works, and coordinating that, and then we can bring that at the same time, hopefully within the next month.
Chair?
I'd be happy to work with you in advance of things coming back, if I could.
Chair?
And I heard Counsel Young?
Yes, I was just going to say, I don't know if maybe just an overall work session on our boards and commissions.
With what purpose?
Just kind of identifying gaps and any improvements that we can make, and just a general understanding of how they function, and maybe get some feedback from them on any recommendations that they.
You want to invite all of the members of all the boards and commissions? I'm just trying to get, I'm.
No, I wouldn't suggest that, but I mean, we could have like the chair or, you know, an individual assigned by each chair come and join us, and, you know, not necessarily have them present, but if we have questions about various boards and commissions, they're there to answer. Just a suggestion. I know we have a lot on our plate, but if we're looking at, you know, like an ag committee or group, I think that it'd be good to look at a holistic picture.
So I don't support that, but I do support what, and she's brought it up before, Sue Marshall brought it up on the Agriculture Committee, I do want to see about moving forward with that. But she also kind of tickled my recollection. Where are we at on the code, the possible code change for rural businesses? You know, is that scheduled?
I think that's what's coming back next week, right? The winery and rural, rural centers, I believe is what it's called, but it's businesses in the rural area. So yeah, that's next week.
Okay.
There you go.
Anything else on policy issues?
I just want to close the loop for Counsel Young. Is there two other counselors that support bringing, or having a work session with the boards and commissions?
I would support that on an as-needed basis when there may be one or two or three that have a question, an issue, or that we do about them, but not in the aggregate.
Yeah, I think if it could be defined a little bit more to kind of understand, I think getting updates from the boards and commissions, and if their roles as originally envisioned are still current, I think maybe cycling a few in from time to time would be a good thing to do.
Anything else on policy issues, council? And hearing none, and there are no executive sessions, council time for May 3rd is now adjourned.